Time is 6:30 and we'll call the meeting to order. Have roll call, please.
Dyke.
President.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
Here.
May Cumber.
Here.
Wintering. Here.
All present and accounted for. Agenda item one is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes or additions? Dr. Cox.
The only addition would be an exempt session for negotiations at the conclusion of this meeting.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented with drop that Dr. Cox recommended about the negotiations after the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and we will have an exempt session after we're finished here. Roll call vote, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Wintering.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item two is to welcome the visitors and have public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The Board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As Board President, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak as well as allowing the Board to complete the full Board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the Board's authority. Please understand that we, as a Board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's Board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments by the public this evening, then?
Thank you, Mr. Dyke. Doug Lindeman, Charles City. Two unrelated topics that I just want to kind of point out. Two weeks ago, I believe, you had a presentation from Washington School and Lincoln School with regard to their math program being in the delinquent category, is what you'd call it. I was concerned after that meeting that we were using a textbook for 11 years, we go on the delinquency list. I'm just wondering if we're going to have other problems in English or science that we need to be watching these matters a little bit closer. I don't keep a computer around for 11 years. I update it and it just concerns me if we have professional staff or merely W-2 workers. So I think we need to keep on top of this and not let a new building become fog in our battles to improve education. Second area, with regard to our new building, we were talking months ago about having the wow factor in the building. Think you need to keep that in mind. As you try to keep within a budget and put in cheaper components, you take a lot of wow out of the building and end up having a lower capital outlay, an increase of cost to your general fund. I can go through a couple of instances to be careful of. One would be the tarazal floors that are possible. Here's one right here. More expensive than tile or carpet, but less maintenance in the long run for janitorial staff. If you look at a building, janitorial staff costs more than your utilities or your insurance. So the cheaper your components, the more work for your janitor, you're not saving money in the long run. Another area, and I missed a meeting a week ago, with regard to your electrical. You can go with aluminum, but you're going to increase your maintenance costs in the long run because aluminum wants to move. In some cases, aluminum does work well, but I don't know of any industrial applications where it's used extensively as in place of copper. Copper, though it's expensive, is still a lower maintenance item, but you made that decision. Final area in regards to wow. Keep in mind you want to keep your costs down to the general fund. We still haven't found out what we're repurposing this building to. We're going to be continuing to use the auditorium, keep the superintendent's office here. We're going to have to maintain insurance, janitorial, utilities, but the other wings of this building, we haven't found a use yet, is going to catch up with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by Board members and superintendent. Dr. Cox.
Thank you. Our school year is quickly coming to a close. There are eight school days left. Students are finished on Friday, May the 22nd, and it is a full day of school. Teacher workday will be on Tuesday, May the 26th. Cary Lane graduation is this Saturday, May 16th, at 1:00 p.m. at the First Congregational Church, and you are all cordially invited to attend. As a reminder, our class day has become an evening event. It will be on Wednesday, May the 20th, at 7:00 in the auditorium. Jerry Mitchell and I worked on three waivers for the city today for the Bus Barn project, the Storm Sewer project, and the middle school project, so those will be ready to submit. And finally, we had Howard Glasser here in the district today. He's the father of the nurtured heart approach. He was talking about how to ignite greatness in children, and he's gone on to Mason City this evening for a free workshop that he is putting on there.
Thank you. Any Board members with comments this evening?
Maybe it'll come up later in the meeting, but before Doug mentioned it tonight, I have talked to a couple electricians and they were wondering, you know, even though we're having a cost season, if we were going to be happy with aluminum wiring because there is some problems with it. The more you plug it in and unplug it, it shrinks and travels and whatever thing else. But anyway, it's just the guys from Estes should know too, and I just wanted to bring that comment up that I've heard that from electricians around town.
Okay, we can talk about that on agenda item six as well. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, school board recognition month.
Thank you. There are just over 2,000 school board members in the state of Iowa overseeing budgets that total $6.1 billion. School board roles. When it comes to vision, the school boards set the vision, keeping student achievement as a primary focus. Structure. School boards employ a superintendent, adopt policies, and see to it that resources are allocated to accomplish the vision. Accountability. The Board monitors student achievement and evaluates progress toward district goals. Advocacy. School boards are key advocates of students and public education. And finally, time. School boards donate their time in service to Iowa students. This year alone, I did some calculating and discovered that each one of you has spent 71 hours, just the size of three full days, in meetings and trainings, and that's just July through right now. By June, each one of you will have met the standard to be recognized for the Better Boardsmanship Award at the Fall Convention. It's my honor to recognize each of our school board members for their tireless efforts to bring about a world-class education for the students here in the Charles City Community School District. So, Lorraine.
Thank you very much.
Jim.
Thank you.
President.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Jason.
Thank you.
Your 71 hours, does that include these meetings? Or is that outside of these meetings?
That's just Board meetings. It's travel to and from trainings, travel to and from Des Moines. So that does not take into account any of the extra time that you put in outside of Board meetings, which is, I'm guessing, three or four times that amount.
Yep, okay.
At a minimum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item five, consideration of grade-alike elementary school plan. Dr. Cox.
We have had a process over the last month of presenting to you, as a school board, the reasons why moving to grade-alike makes sense as we look at achieving our mission of creating an environment in which students and staff can maximize their potential. Having really large fourth grade classes at one building and really tiny ones at another does not do that. Having a single-section kindergarten of 24 while at the other building, there are three sections of 17, does not do that. Putting all of our resources for K-2 at one building and all resources for 3-5 really helps us accomplish that goal. And so, you've heard from the principals. They've conducted a parent meeting that was attended by 21 parents, 17 school staff members. At least three of you were present for that. We've taken input at Facebook. Tonight was the final opportunity for people to come and speak. I don't see anyone ready to speak about the issue, and so although there have been a small number of people who have been opposed to this, to me, it says that the majority understand that this is what's right for our students moving forward, and the recommendation of the administration is to move to grade-alike for the 2015-16 school year. Our elementary principals are here if you had any final questions, and there's a transition plan that has been shared with you as well.
Do Board members have any questions or comments?
I just got a couple of comments, Mr. President, and one of them is, I don't think that the people that are against it, after they've worked with it for a couple of months, get used to the traffic pattern and the routine of making the deliveries of their students to wherever school they got to be. I don't think it'll be a problem. And I think as a Board, we're looking at the right formula to better educate our kids, and that's what we're supposed to be doing. And I think that's where we're on the right track there because we can give them a little better attention on grade-alike than they have been otherwise. So I think that it's a good plan, and I honestly think that people will get used to it, just like everything else. Everything new deserves something that are against it. Thank you.
I've stated a number of times why I support it, you know, and I can't believe that anybody's done any more Google searches in the last month than I have on this because I spent a lot of time looking at things, and it's become apparent that this is a very popular conversation all the way across the country, not just in our district. But the conclusion I've come to and I firmly stand by is that if I were not comfortable putting my own kids through this, which I have a first grader and a three-year-old very quickly affected by this, I would not be in support of it, and I'm very satisfied by the information I've been given by the administration and the staff. I definitely support this, and like I said, had I not, if I didn't trust that my kids were going to be bettered by this, I would not support it, but I think that we're in good shape here.
Yeah, I would echo that as well, Jason. You know, as we had heard from Dr. Cox earlier, you know, we are advocates for students and their education and putting students first. We saw the last meeting, some of the data that was presented on how our students are performing versus some surrounding schools of similar size and what their scores were higher. And so, you know, we do need to question, is there a better way to educate them? And I think that grade-alike is going to give students as well as teachers a lot of opportunities to do a better job at that. I had given you all this article that I found on Twitter, and, you know, I think that with grade-alike, we have to walk before we can run, but I really like the thoughts behind this where this is a fifth and sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade teachers in Cheyenne, Wyoming, that are team teaching their students in the manner in which if mainstream students go to their class, remedial students go to their class, and then advanced students go to another class specifically for math in this article, but I've seen it done with language arts as well. And I think when you put students in the class that fits their achievement level, they're successful and they feel more comfortable. They can still be challenged, but I think this is a real good goal, perhaps, down the road if it would work here with grade-alike. And grade-alike would allow us to do something like that.
Do you have any comments, or? I'll go back to a comment that I made at our first presentation at the table at a Board meeting. At one point, we had seven elementaries in this district, and now we're down to two. And I don't believe that we have neighborhood elementary schools with only two in as many square miles as our district is or even the size of our community. So having two elementaries that are a mile apart, three minutes by vehicle, it makes sense to me to have everyone in kindergarten in the same building so that we can balance the class sizes and we can ensure that everyone in each grade level is afforded the same opportunity at the same time. I think it'll be a benefit to the faculty and the students to move forward with this. I have confidence that the administration and our professional staff will move forward and have the utmost student need and parent need in mind as we move with this transition in the future, if it were to pass this evening. So are we ready for a motion?
Motion to approve grade-alike elementary school plan as recommended by the administration.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grade-alike elementary plan as has been presented by the administration. Any further discussion by the Board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Wintering.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item six, middle school addition construction documents. We have Estes Construction here.
Since the last time we were here, I just wanted to give you a quick update on some of our activities, and certainly a lot of those have entailed collaborative discussions with the design team and the engineering team, and also the big part of what we do is the contractor outreach. So we've engaged several local contractors to make sure that what we're looking at for bid packaging and packaging, the scope of work, is in line with what the current market in the area could support. The other thing we've done is we've verified quantities, verified unit costs, working with BLDD and the engineering team, looking for opportunities to certainly keep the project within the budget parameters that have previously been established, and then identifying other opportunities that certainly could contribute to the plus to the project, giving us opportunities for some of those alternate bid items that have previously been discussed. So what I'd like to do, if, I'm not sure why that keeps moving, but what I'd like...
Justin may have it on a transition. It's changing on its own.
executive summary as it was provided to you initially on Friday, I believe, but certainly revised version of that this morning. And I do apologize for getting that to you in a delayed fashion. Sometimes we get other opportunities to identify cost savings or scope that we want to make sure gets reflected into the document. And, okay, if you look at page number one, you'll note that the previous time we were here, which would have been April 16th or 13th, and then amended the numbers per the Board action of that meeting, the numbers were 18.981 million. Since then, we did some more collaborative thinking, both internally within the Estes group and with BLDD and the engineering team. As you can see, the revised estimate, as we have it today, indicates the budget or the estimate to be 18.7 million, which puts us approximately $22,300 below the 18.8 estimate that had previously been recognized. So before we switch gears on that, though, what I would like to do is address a couple of the major items that contributed to where the numbers sit today. The first one, Board approval to eliminate the clear story roof and realize a cost savings there. You can see the order of magnitude that we have recognized for that scope of work. The second item there, the aluminum feeder item, that appears to be somewhat of a, a bit of a discussion topic tonight, and what I'd like to do is just to make a couple of comments on that because what we're seeing in the industry today is that extensive studies have been done, and I believe I shared that with part of the team, where the aluminum feeders are being used in lieu of copper in hospitals and large facilities where they see a savings to the project. Now, we're certainly not advocating that the entire system go to aluminum, but what we are advocating is that if we can see a cost savings within the feeders, equipment that's within the panels, then let's explore those opportunities. I say let's explore those opportunities because we have also shared the data with the electrical engineering team, and they too are looking at the information, and within the industry, it is an acceptable practice now. So we're not advocating the wiring and the entire system. We are saying, let's look at opportunities where we can save some money. It used to be that the lugs within the equipment panels were, would loosen up, so you'd have to go back in and tighten them up every year, every two years. That is no longer the case. They fixed within the feeder system what it takes to keep those as torqued as when they are initially installed. So I just want to just make a couple of comments on that. I don't have the study with me, but certainly I can share additional information. We do have lists of hospital projects that have used it. We'd be happy to provide that as well if you would like to see that. Item number three, the Board approval to move the 572 gymnasium bleacher seats into the alternate bid. You can see the cost savings realized from that. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed out that those items all have contributed to the project as we see it being under the 18.8 million budget that was recognized. Let's see here. The top of the second page, the smart choice options, really those are just items we wanted to make sure that we identified as opportunities yet. We know there's been some correspondence regarding some natural daylighting opportunities within the gym and certainly some natural daylighting opportunities within the gathering areas. So we didn't, we haven't fully explored the scope of what those could be, but certainly know that they're on the radar, and we will continue to work with BLDD and the engineering team to make sure that if those items are integrated into the project, what does that mean and what do we have to do to stay within the boundaries of the budget? Alternate bid items, really those you've seen before. The only one that was revised was item number three to reflect the gymnasium bleacher adjustment, but beyond that, there have been no changes to that as of yet. Some of the next steps that we'll see moving forward, and pretty exciting that they're right around the corner, issuing of the early bid package documents. I believe Jean and her team shared a table of contents and a sheet index of what those documents will entail. So we look for those to be available to bidders or at least at the print house this Friday, which would be the 15th. After that, we would look to hold a pre-bid meeting to interested contractors, subs and suppliers on the 26th, which also happens to be the same day that we would anticipate a public hearing that evening on the project. Thereafter, we look for bids to be submitted or received on the 3rd of June. We have a pre-award process that Estes conducts to make sure that the contractors that have submitted have complied with the documents, have the insurance coverages that we look for, certainly have the quality and the reputation that we would expect on a project like this. And that's what we call the pre-awards process. We would be conducting that somewhere in the range of June 5th so that we can collect the data, verify it, have meetings with them, make sure they're comfortable interpreting the scope as we have, and verifying that their bid is, in fact, quality and responsible. Then we would look to recommend awarding contracts on the 8th of June, which I believe is one of your regular Board meetings, so we would provide all of that information to you as soon as we compile it from the pre-award process. We would mobilize between June 15th and the 17th or somewhere within those, that range of dates, and then look to start construction approximately June 22nd on the early phase of the project. Happy to entertain any questions if you should have any.
Any questions for Estes?
I had just, just a couple of observations. It looks like we're still counting the energy rebate as 75,000. Is that, is it accurate that that was locked in at around 90? Is that...
Yes, the last meeting that I was involved with, with the White Group indicated that it could be close to 90,000 rebate, and the confirmation that we were waiting to get back was whether the gas service or the gas portion of the energy rebate could be applied to that number or not. So we want to make sure that we're conservative, but we know that it could be up to 90,000.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then the other one was, the other comment I had or question was the design contingency, still 3%, 475,000. Is there a point at which that gets rolled into the construction contingency, or does that become released to alternative options? Where, what, how is that handled?
To your second question, yes. When we see the bids come in and we know that the bids are favorable to the market in terms of what we're seeing in the area, that the contractors that we got commitments from in terms of bidding the project were, in fact, competitive and are engaged, that some of that money would, could...
Could.
...get attributed back to the project. Now, we want to make sure we don't do that too soon because there are still items out there that we don't have a full range of information on yet, and at 100% construction documents or bid documents, we would do another look of the contents to make sure that the rubber band didn't stretch...
Yeah.
...once again. So it's there, we're carrying there that, but we don't want to release that. It's just not a good practice.
It was just comforting to see that I hadn't seen this level of detail in the budget until just, you know, recently today, really, where I'd seen that, where we still have that little bit of a cushion in there for those things...
Yes.
...as well as the construction contingency of equal amounts.
That is correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Pete, one more question. I, as I recall, early on when we had talked with Estes, that there was a way that you would be able to engage some local contractors at this point too, to, you know, so that we're building a new school, that we hopefully can put some local folks to work, provided that they comply with, with the bid and the insurance and so forth.
Yes.
And, and that is part of this bid package, correct?
It is. In fact, the bid package that we're calling the early scope of work engages folks, and I'll just name some names of folks we've talked to. For example, the Concrete Paving Allied is one of the locals, I believe. Also, we've looked to... Also, we've looked to pop excavating to gauge their interest on the, the magnitude of the earthwork that's involved here. And certainly Scott could speak to some of the others, but outreach has been ongoing for several months now. And I can tell you that we have a project, two project coordinators in-house. That, that is their responsibility with Scott's input, with my input, with Paul's input. So we are looking to get not just local, but the region engaged in the project.
Great, so if there's any contractors out there looking for work, they need to knock on our door.
Absolutely. And, and we're looking at the bid packages of different sizes or magnitude so that even the smaller contractors and suppliers can engage in the project.
That's excellent.
Novak Electric, we've talked to. And there's been some other plumbing and HVAC contractors that we've addressed the project with.
Excellent.
Very good, thank you.
I got two questions I want to ask and maybe one of them, maybe both of them are dumb. But the first one is last winter, there was, you get, they were here and they wanted us to hire a company to come in there with a backhoe and make several diggings and find out whether the soil underneath was going to be. Do we ever get a report on that? If we do, I've never seen it.
Yes, I believe that report, and Scott could probably speak to the dates on that. But there was a report that was generated from what we're calling the test pits or the test borings.
Okay.
Believe that was.
Maybe that was immediate and it was gone or something, I don't know. Okay, and then the next question I got, at what time, and maybe this is not an important question, but sometime or another, you guys are representing us, working with the contractors, but at what time does, do we hire somebody? Do we hire somebody that actually coordinates with you guys on a day-to-day basis that can report to the board?
No, actually, that's part of our advocacy.
That's your part of your job?
Yes, in fact.
Okay.
Pretty soon, once we get these bids in and the contracts look to be in order, they get approved, you'll start seeing both Scott and the other gentleman that, that is with us today is Mike Tharp. He will be on site regularly as well as probably one or two other people. And then once the construction activity really gets going, they will be on-site daily.
Daily, okay.
So their responsibility partly is to generate daily reports, weekly activities, a three-week look-ahead schedule, report all of that data to you so that you're aware of the things that are happening on-site. In fact, we've had some instances where if the, the principal or the superintendent or others want to be engaged on a daily basis, we can certainly accommodate that. So that's, that is our responsibility, yes, sir.
I just wondered, because I know, I mean, not that, I guess that's why we went with you guys, not that we're worried about you, but we need somebody that's reporting back to us because most of us don't know, know one thing from the other when you go out there to look at the site, you know, how it's coming or what, if we're on schedule or behind schedule or whether we're getting the materials we bought or whatever, that's you guys' job.
Absolutely, yes. And you'll see pictures within the reports that we generate. You'll see the three-week look-ahead reporting that's done. Certainly we'll give you schedule updates. And both Scott and some of the other folks that will be here are very well-versed in presenting information in public forums.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think several months ago, we had talked, I think in a Buildings and Grounds meeting about Jerry Mitchell, Buildings and Grounds Director, being involved in some of the, or at least aware of if there's minor day-to-day change order things, questions, stuff like this, you know, Allah here versus there type of questions, that he would be maybe the go-to person from the district along with Dan on that as well. But that was, that was quite a while ago, we talked about that.
It was several months.
Yeah, so that Jerry would be involved in this as well.
That sounds like a good plan.
Okay, that's fine, but I don't, I'm not questioning Jerry's ability, but he's got enough work to do. Somebody need, I mean, he's not going to make them day-to-day snaps decisions. Somebody's got to tell somebody that it's okay to do it. And I would think that would be Dan. I mean, it kept finding when it gets ready to make a major decision, it needs to be Dan to make it. Because he ain't going to call a board meeting every time you want to make it either, so.
That was the context of the conversation.
But I, I don't think that that, this new building project should be Jerry's responsibility to make those decisions.
Yeah, it's not at all intended that he would be there on-site every day by any means, no.
No, no.
That's the point I was.
That, that's our advocacy to you. We're working on your behalf. So in essence, we're representing you and those decisions. And when the decisions are outside of the instructions within the contract documents, certainly we'll look for your engagement. But that, that is our responsibility to advocate for you. Yes, sir.
That's what you're all getting paid for, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's why they've been here so much, so they know what we want.
Well, I mean, don't you guys agree with me that we're not capable of making that we're no forget, right? A bang for our buck or whatever.
That's why we hired the experts.
That's why we hired them.
That's why we hired Estes.
They will.
Plus, I just can't envision Dr. Cox out there running down a bulldozer, you know, to tell him, no, 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 over here.
He lets him dunk him with his suit on, why wouldn't he?
We're seeing. We're deciding where to put the jack stood or things to.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Did you have any more questions about the electrical gym or?
No, I answered the question. I, I thought they were talking about doing the whole thing with aluminum, but basically you're just doing the feeder lines.
That's, that's.
Leader lines, that's, that's.
Yeah, the feeders.
That makes sense. And if you've had good success other places, you know.
And again, we, we do have that study that was, I believe, we shared it with the team, but certainly can, can give you additional information.
And if you've talked to the local larger electricians that have worked on big projects, they'll tell you that that is their norm now is to run.
I just didn't want us to be trying to save a buck today and paying for it five years from now or ten years from now, that we made the wrong decision, so. So that's all I was getting.
I've talked to a couple of electrical contractors as well, and they seem to be satisfied with going with the aluminum on the feeder lines. You know, their comments were that perhaps every fall before school starts, depending upon what we put in, things should be checked, but that's probably, do that with anything. You know, the entire building gets a going over before we open the door for business in the fall, so, you know.
So that's, answers my question.
Okay.
We're fine.
Are we ready for a motion? This is an action item this evening to approve the list of drawing specifications, table of contents, budget estimate and scope of work as presented.
I move to approve the middle school additional construction documents as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the middle school addition construction documents as presented. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Absolutely. Or sooner.
Yes, sir.
Like that number, thank you.
Yeah, that's.
I like that number.
Thank you. Thank you.
One doesn't have to be on the cover, is right.
So agenda item seven is the food service management company, RFP. Dr. Cox, I think this one's yours.
This one's mine, yes. State of Iowa has a real prescriptive process for how RFPs go with food service. In the fall months, November, December, that's when a school district would be exploring whether or not to go with a food service management company. January, the RFP would be written, sent in for feedback. That normally takes three to four weeks. In February, then that process gets refined. February and March, RFPs are issued and everything would be done by May fifteenth so that it could start on July first. Our six-member committee didn't even start our food service visits until January sixteenth. We went up to Albert Lee. We went to Cassin-Manterville in February, and then we went to Decorah in March. It really was out of the blue on April seventh that we were notified that because of the lingering problems in Des Moines with not setting a school state supplemental aid, that they were going to extend the deadline until April thirtieth. We had some staff work on this from April thirteenth to the thirtieth. Ultimately submitted an RFP that did not have all of the information in it. We were trying to get responses back from the gal in Des Moines who provides the feedback. And April thirtieth is a fixed deadline, and so because a completed RFP wasn't submitted, we do not have the opportunity to put out a bid for this coming school year. It would be for the 2016-17 school year at the earliest. In their interim, we've made some changes to the food service program. In March, we saw the re-institution of the salad bar. They offered a second main entree at the middle school and high school levels. There are some other changes that are going to take place between now and August. And our committee is going to convene again on May twenty-eighth to go through the goals for the coming school year and look at participation numbers. So that would be the status of the food service RFP.
Any comments or discussion from the board?
I've got a couple of comments, as I understand it. How come, how come the application was sent in not completed? Who was responsible for sending it in and complete?
It was sent in not completed because we didn't have the answers. And it was part of the, we want some feedback from the state director.
Well, I was also informed that the state director said that she emailed our person up here several times and even on the thirtieth asked if she had any questions and she's, to finish getting it filled out, and she had no questions. So then it should have been completed, I think.
I don't have, I don't have the answer that you're looking for.
I mean, it just, I don't know, it looks funny to me that the thing was even sent in if it wasn't complete to begin with. And then, and then why if they emailed us, wanted to know if we had any questions to ask because we couldn't understand how to fill it out, we didn't ask them.
I'll remind you that we had two weeks to do what normally takes two months to do.
I understand that, but, okay. And then, and there seems to be some discrepancies I hear from talking to different people. How come, like Decorah, they can go up there and, and I like the way they're doing it. It's a fantastic situation. But then you talk to somebody that works at the food service here and they said, "Well, we got to follow, the state sends us the recipes and we can't add one more component to the recipe to make it taste better or anything else." Well, how come some schools can do it, some can't, or why can't we? I mean, just, she says, "We don't even dare carry a salt shaker on our carts because," you know. Of course, I told her, I answered her back and I said, "You know, some of the things where these kids not wanting to eat this healthy food is, should start at home, that they're letting them eat too much junk food at home. So that's what they think they're going to eat when they come to school," you know. And she said, she agreed with me there, but I was really surprised because one of, well, one of the girls that works on the foods staff came up to me and she said, "Well, I got another job for another, got a job for another year because they didn't get it sent in on time." Well, I thought that was kind of funny that they're out telling us that too, so. I mean, it surprised me, I guess. Then a couple of days later, I got the email from the school that says, "Yeah, we didn't get it in on time" and this and that, but I just wondered, just questioning why it was, you know, embarrassment of even sending it in if it wasn't complete, you know.
Well, you know, I will say this, Jim, you know, you're, the things you're questioning as far as why can Decorah do this, but we can't do that? And why is it that, you know, we aren't serving the same type of food or the same type of program? This RFP was very interesting because in that table, it showed what the minimum requirements for serving vegetables, fruits and meat. And I, all along, I'd been told, well, it can only be two ounces that we can serve to students. Well, that's just the minimum. So I think there's a lot of confusion, miscommunication, education that needs to be done on this whole food service component, you know, from top to bottom. And, and that was the beauty of going out for an RFP and getting an expert in here, that this is their business. Yeah, they're in business to make a profit, but they have some very happy customers, very satisfied students across the country that are eating their food. And there's a, there's a range, a great range between what they're serving and what we're serving. You get the expert in here, just like you have Estes in here, and you don't have to hand-hold so much. But, you know, we didn't get the RFP completed. You know, as I go through, it looks like we did complete the lion's share of it, but left out things like who does it, who do you send it to, what's the date to send it to? And then that grid to grade it with, well, we already had the goals figured out, but, you know, it's water over the dam. But, you know, we had come up with a lot of goals on what we wanted if we were to accept a bid from a food service contractor. And I don't see why there isn't any reason that we shouldn't incorporate those same goals to the coming year, whether it's in-house or outsourced. You know, we've got them listed, we've been talking about them in our committee meeting.
I actually have some copies.
You have copies of that?
No, possible.
And, you know, I am gravely disappointed that we were not able to get this done we've gone through an awful lot of work at the board table, away from the board table, mostly away from the board table learning. And to not fill in the blanks, I, I just am very disappointed. It was a good opportunity. And so, you know, I, I don't know what we need to do to make this right going forward.
Well, what I see now is that if our RFP would have been completed and would have gone in, we would have had a waiting period then for those bids to come back. We then would have had a board, had to meet again and make a decision. We're still undecided whether or not we were going to go with a food service company.
True.
I think what we're faced with now, because that obviously, like you said, it's water over the dam. We don't have that waiting period anymore that we have to wait to start implementing our goals and moving this forward for this fall. We're going to become more, obviously, someone's going to have a lot more work. I too spoke to some people in Des Moines. There was some suggestion, just a suggestion made that if we so decide, that still doesn't keep us from hiring a food service consultant. That still doesn't keep us that if we need to bring in somebody, we find an ideal program that we'd like our program to be. That still doesn't stop us from going about hiring somebody to help us get to where we want to be. In fact, it only ate us because we won't be paying a food service company. We've allowed those funds now can be used in other places. So it just now is falling back to where we were before April.
Yes.
And we'll just move forward from there.
Is there any, is there a question I've got, I guess, with, would it, and the, okay, instead of hiring this company to come in here, what would it do to, to us if we would just hire somebody that was an expert in running the food service program? I mean, right now, we don't even have a full-time one and they have no training at all. I mean, other than they've served these meals before, but they have had no dietary or chef-type training. I would think that somebody, I think the staff that works under them does a great job, but they got somebody to answer to and that person is not trained enough to give them the directions on how to present this food that looks more edible and, and looks more appetizing to the kids.
That was kind of my thoughts, I guess, all along on this. I've kind of referred to you guys, you have great interest in this and have done an excellent job researching and looking at stuff with the visits and whatnot. I had hoped, a little disappointed that we aren't going to have the opportunity to have the, the proposals come back. That's what I was looking forward to, was to see the options and then make an educated decision on what's the best to implement here. Because it may or may not have been going with another company or whatever it may have been. But to build on what Jim says, you know, I, I question is, are there professional learning opportunities for our staff, just like in teachers? I mean, are there conferences and, and trainings that they're not going to that they should be? Opportunities that, like I said, just like our teachers and staff come to, it's, it's a professional learning opportunity and, and we make an investment in our classrooms. This is equally as important too, and maybe that's something that we can immediately investigate and something that over the summer can be implemented.
Well, coincidentally, we got an email, I think, Robin, you got that too, and Dr. Cox from Danae Lundberg, who's on our food service committee, about some webinar opportunities. I think this first webinar is in early June, but there's another list of webinars offered by Martin Brothers, our supplier, about various subjects. And certainly. by Martin Brothers, our supplier, about various subjects, and certainly, you know, our food service director head cooks and so forth, depending upon what the topic is, it's very applicable.
I'll, uh, hopefully finish here on this item, since it's not an action item, and also say that I was disappointed not to have the RFP come back or available, although I do believe that the food service committee has done a great job in all of their work and research, and you will continue to meet, I'm sure, and help us to improve our breakfast and lunch that we provide students and staff, and at this point, you know, I would say that our job primarily is to be available and ask the superintendent and administrative staff, "What do you all need to do your job better? What can we do to assist you in helping the food service program be better?" So, not looking for an answer tonight necessarily, but just know that the board would be here to assist and support you in making effective changes to our food service program, so, and as far as staff goes, that's your recommendation as our superintendent, as to who fits into what position, so we look to your leadership in that.
Mr. President, may I make a comment, too?
Sure.
Um, I, I think that, like you say, I would echo your thoughts, that, that Robin and Lorraine and whoever else was on that committee did a fantastic job. I'd like to have them go ahead and, and see if they could come up with some recommendations to us to maybe act on. I'd like to see something done yet, on our own by this fall, you know.
I, I believe that we'll have communication from administration on some changes.
Okay, so I'd like to see them go ahead and procure some of the other, and report to Dr. Cox on them, and, and see what we can come up with, but I think we need to be acting on something yet this summer, but I'd like to have you continue on what all the alternatives are, whether there's classes we can send them to, and, and whatever else to get them better educated. I should have brought in, I didn't bring in the article, I read it, and I don't remember all the terminologies, but there was a big, two-page article in the Farm Bureau spokesman last month, or last week, on the Decorah schools, and how they were handling their cafeteria and their lunches, and they were working with some other out-of-the-school district organizations to help supply their foods and stuff, too, so, I, I can get another, I think I might have that at home yet, if I don't, I'll get another copy of it, because I think it'd be interesting for y'all to read it, it was, it was quite interesting, I thought, first thing I said, "Wow, our, our people was up there looking at all that, we've seen pictures of it," but, uh, it was quite an article in the area news on the Decorah schools, and then they talked about also the, a couple of the other, the other school at Cassin, you, you guys went to, too, they talked about that in that article, so, just-
We'll continue to make improvement, and continue to meet, and continue to make changes, I'm sure.
One, one last comment, um, you know, with what you're suggesting, Scott, you know, what do we need to do to move forward? Our next meeting is the end of May, May 28th, and, um, but before we meet, school has, we've got a couple of weeks here left of school, and, um, I'd really like to see our food service director find some time so that she is not locked away in her kitchen during lunchtime, in which she can get out to the other kitchens in the district and find out what equipment is not working, make a list of that equipment, and perhaps review that with Buildings and Grounds to see if any of that equipment can be salvaged, repaired during the summer months in preparation for fall.
Or even upgraded.
Or even upgrade, yeah, if we, if we got the funds to do that, um, that's even better. For example, salad bars, do we need new pans? Because we've seen what it should look like, and we know what ours looks like. We need an upgrade in pans, we need an upgrade in serving spoons and tongs and things such as that, um, it's time to improve our game, and apparently, we've got to take ownership of it.
And I don't want to drag this conversation on longer, because I know you're trying to move on.
I am trying to move on, go ahead.
But to the point, that is why at some point, we do need to look at this and consider where we need to bring in, I'm not saying that we need to get rid of someone and replace them with someone else, but we may additionally need someone to come in with fresh eyes that can see the things that no one else has been able to see in this district, in the food service for the past decade.
Yeah, bingo.
Or even by better training than personnel we have, and get, give them fresh ideas, fresh aspects on whatever.
There's still, it's the same thing.
I know, it's the same thing.
You know, we had, we did the same thing in our maintenance department a couple of years, and look at the results, um, you know, we just need some fresh eyes, it's not any different than if somebody were to walk into my house, they're gonna see all the things that I have forgotten to consider that I need to fix and make better, so, um-
That's a good recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the committee will meet again on May 28th, you said?
May 28th.
So, things will continue to proceed in that area. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, financial report for 2015, April.
Um, in looking at the food service financials, our cash balance at the end of April went up 7.2 percent. We are looking at, or we've used this new tool called the Paid Lunch Equity Tool, which calculates the prices we have to charge for lunches next year, and it looks like we'll need to increase our prices by 10 cents, so, um, although our fund balance is up, um, you know, paying for equipment and other things we can pay for from Pebble, however, the $750,000 allotment that we had from Pebble this coming year, it has already been chosen, um, so, um, that's unfortunate, but, um, also, um, we're in August, we're gonna start the process to look at, um, the Pebble sales tax loan, again, that we need for the rest of the project. The current balance in our middle school addition account is 8.2 million, uh, and that's it.
Any questions on the financial report for April of 2015?
I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the financial report for April of 2015. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 9, consideration of consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion approved the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 10, important upcoming dates.
Before we get into the dates, can I ask a couple of questions? Is, is August gonna be, I see you mentioned August in the report that we need to start looking at taking a loan out on the rest of the Pebble funds, is that gonna be quick enough to get, um, money into the account, by the time we're gonna need it?
Takes three months, and they aren't projecting that we'll need additional funds until sometime early December.
Okay.
So, January even.
So-
Okay.
And that was based on our last cash flow, I have a note to get a new cash flow here in the next while after bids come in, to see if things might have changed, or, you know, if we need to push it up or not.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. And then, the next question I've got, before we get into these important dates, it's been a year, can you, can you refresh some of our memory on what the board's expectancy is on some of these dates, I mean, like for the baccalaureate, and for the graduation, and for the Kerry Lane graduation, and some of that stuff, as you, as you go through it, Dr. Cox, please.
Sure. We've got Kerry Lane graduation, would expect all five board members to be present for that, uh, the music awards, the senior athletic banquet, those are nice things to attend if you're able to, uh-
They got, they sent me a couple of tickets.
Well, then, I'd attend.
Yeah, I think we all got tickets to the, uh-
Oh, did we?
Yep.
Senior Athletic.
Senior Athletic one.
Okay.
Class day in baccalaureate, nice to attend. Graduation, be there at 1:00, I know it starts at 1:30, but be present at the gym at 1:00.
Or earlier, if you wanna park up close.
True.
Yeah.
How about class day?
It would be nice to attend, but if you can't, you can't.
Well, then, on the, on graduation date, is the board gonna share and passing off the diplomas like we did last year?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I've looked at my schedule for the next two weeks, and it's fairly full, in the evening with school activities.
I will be unable to attend Saturday, 16th, out of town.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
I will also, I have a wedding that day.
You have a wedding?
Saturday.
For Kerry Lane.
This Saturday.
This Saturday?
Mm-hmm, Kerry Lane.
Yeah.
Any other upcoming dates?
No, you know, but I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, and it just occurred to me that I had lunch, I was invited to have lunch, as, as well as Jason, um, but you were out of town, and I was invited to have lunch with Kerry Lane students and their teachers to learn about their school year and their students, and, and they will be graduating eight students on Saturday with their fingers crossed, because some of them are working right down to the wire, uh, I think this week, they've got some, some things that they're doing out in the community, cleaning up the Kerry Lane Chapman Cat grounds and, and so forth, but always a great time to meet those students and talk with them about, um, the program that they're going through.
Hearing no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn at 7:33.